If everyone will please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
Um, there is going to be an amendment to the count, to the agenda as we have it. Under new business, we are going to take items fourteen through seventeen. And move them up to number four, five, six, seven respectively. So, and then it will follow the progression from there. So, just so everyone knows, um, if I could get a, uh, motion to approve the amended agenda.
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, next item is the consent calendar. All these matters are considered routine by the council, so if there, unless there's any questions, I can welcome a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mister Mayor, I so move. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Opposed, carried. Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on anything they wish to bring up for the council that is not on the agenda. If there, if there's an item on the agenda you wish to comment about, we'll make time for you at that time. Try and keep your comments to five minutes.
Uh, Andy Schaefer from Schaefer's Foods.
Yes, Andy.
Uh, last month you guys approved their, I don't know if approved or set the laws for the cabin cannabinoid. I just wanted some clarification on, uh, what your verbiage is here, it says. The cannabinoid, cannabinoid products cannot be. Sold by means of self-service merchandising. What is meant by that?
Bathing machines.
So, on the shelf is fine?
Yes.
And then also it says storage, all licensed products shall be either stored behind the counter. Or other areas not really accessible to customers. Is that just storage? Or is that also, I guess my question is, can I merchandise it on my shelf?
I think what he wants, can you pivot, can you set it on the counter so you can still basically?
Yeah, yeah, there's laws against the, uh, the edibles.
Right.
But the drinkables can be out for someone to grab, and then obviously the same laws abide by, you know, ringing it through the till.
Right.
But neither us nor spirits nor the pickle have room to put forty products behind a service counter.
Sure, under, yeah, understood, and, and certainly I think one of the specific reasons was the edible piece to have that behind the counter.
Yes, or in a lot of cases.
Right, but I don't think the intent was to have the beverages, because like you mentioned, if you're at an off sale, you're gonna grab something just like you would another product, so. Um, if we need to clarify that, we can certainly do that, but I think the intent was specifically for the edible piece. To make sure that that was behind the counter, so.
Okay, I was making sure before we.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Got too far with this.
Is that every, is that the council's understanding too?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
I, okay, if we have to, we know we're gonna probably have to make some amendments here or there to the ordinance as this whole thing unfolds. We realize that, but clarification wise, but.
That's how we'd approach, approach the permitting process, so.
Yeah, yeah, which is later on the meeting, right? The fees and.
Well, approving the fees will happen, um, tonight, just to have that as part of our fee schedule, and then we are finalizing the forms to have them ready for January, so that. Whomever would like to have that THC license could do that.
And that's gonna be just like anything else in the city where it has to be, like, if you have the form in January sixth, it's too late for the February meeting? For me to get approved by the council?
So, the deadline for council packets, I believe, is a week prior. To the meeting, so that would be January fourteenth for the twenty first, yes.
Is there gonna be pushed back months and months, or is there gonna be?
The hope is to approach it like a liquor license, so we fill out the forms, and then we would present any request for, for licensing to the council on the next upcoming agenda to approve. I mean, that should be, it's pretty simple, hopefully, so. That's the goal, and if you have your OCM license, then that expedites the process too.
And, and also, I mean, the state has been looking at some of the ordinances put out by municipalities and say, you can do this, but you can't do that, so there are. There might be some shuffling, like Mayor said.
You should be able to be ready to go in January. I wouldn't anticipate, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Andy. Anyone else for open forum? Seeing none, we'll close open forum. Next item is report, city administrator monthly report.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Ryan, good evening again, members of the council, uh, my monthly report is in your packet, a handful of these items will be addressed under new business tonight. Um, the one item I do have that was an addition, uh, this came to me late last week, is a request from the Brainerd J C's regarding use of. Uh, our new, some of our new city property for the ice fishing extravaganza. I have included the email from Sean Kelly, uh, making the request, and I did speak to him this afternoon. So for a little context, I know the council's familiar with this event, um, they've had, they've used this property, the parking lot area for many, many years. Um, they will plow it themselves if they need to, if there's snow that needs to be removed, uh, they only need it for February first, for that day. Uh, they will follow up the following day and make sure it's free of garbage or anything like that that needs to be addressed, and, uh, we did discuss that. My recommendation would include a certificate of insurance. To have that, um, otherwise, I said, I'm pretty sure the council's familiar with this event, um, the J C, it's, J C's run a, a great event, so. I'd bring this forward to you tonight for consideration, and if you have any concerns, otherwise, I would include the COI as part of that approval.
I'll make a motion that we, um, allow the J C, Brainerd J C's to use the property, assuming they make sure that they, we have their certificate of insurance.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions?
Is there any other liabilities for something like that?
Typically, the insurance covers really any scenario that might occur, but I, I don't anticipate, since it's their land, I mean, there's really no infrastructure things we would be concerned about.
No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
Uh, city attorney is not here yet, he was gonna be running a little late, city engineer.
Good evening, everyone, um, I guess what I've been working on has been the, uh, two thousand and twenty five street improvement project, and on, uh. I think it was November twenty seventh, we had like a public meeting with the residents that, on all the roadways, there was probably twenty, twenty-five people that showed up here. We explained the project to them, we were at probably a thirty percent level, and it seemed like. I don't know, it seemed like people were fairly happy about it, and, uh. Yeah, so we're continuing to move forward with that project, the, also working on the Gull Lake Trail Phase Four B, which is the connection from where it left off that. Um, Lower Roy Lake Road and seventy-seven and going to the west. And also working on the Nisswa Park, which is the, uh, outdoor recreation grant, providing that information to submit for the grant.
What's happening on the lake shore piece, are they having to build a boardwalk around the burial mounds ever found?
I'm not sure exactly what the, yeah, that was the idea, is to build some type of boardwalk around there. I know that the lake shore grant was approved. Um, they're starting the process of getting that grant money established and moving forward.
It's gotta be a pretty penny.
Two and a half, I believe, right? Two point five million for.
For that boardwalk?
Yep, well, for that final leg.
Oh, okay. But a majority of that's going to the boardwalk.
Yeah.
Lake Shore, wow. Thank you.
Um, Tom, we skipped you, do you have anything?
You can skip me, I don't have anything to. Sorry, I'm late.
Okay, um, under new business, um, first item is going to be the resolution approving the final, uh, two thousand and twenty-four tax levy collectible twenty-five. In the amount of three million, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, four hundred and, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Can we get a second? I'll second it then. So, council discussion. Any discussion, Joe?
I'm just looking here, um. Are these the exact numbers that we had talked about last time with all the cuts?
They are, yes.
I don't have anything.
Jesse? Bruce? Mark?
Well, I'd ask you to break everything down, but I, I already kinda know where everything goes. What's the largest increase to the, with the nine point five percent? Is there one specific area where the, a, a good portion of this goes?
With respect to the nine point seven five percent levy increase, um, over seven of that is attributed to the new debt that has been issued for the land purchase. Two percent and some change goes to the general fund budget.
Right.
Well, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, signal by, by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, item two, resolution adopting the city of Nisswa budget for calendar year two thousand and twenty-five. I'll make a motion that you accept, that we accept the budget as presented.
Second.
Further discussion, Joe?
No.
Bruce?
Nothing.
Mark?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Resolution in adopting increase in sewer rates for two thousand and twenty-five.
Mayor Ryan, based on the cash flow document provided by P F M, uh, as worked on, uh, with staff, uh, the sewer rates proposed, uh, would reflect a six percent increase from two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Well, I'm on the sewer and I don't like it, but I'll make the motion to. Adopt the increase in sewer rates as presented.
Well, second.
Any further discussion? Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Um, we are now, we're going to Sean, um, item fourteen, approve fire department medical rescue unit. Go ahead, Chief.
Good evening. So what we have here is the medical response unit, we decided quite a few years ago, I want to say about fifteen, to do first responder calls in this area. And the paperwork had never been filed, well, the E M S R B has cracked out on us and asked us to sign the paperwork, and so in front of you is the application and the paperwork that needs to be signed by the council. For us to comply with the E M S R B, pretty cut and dry.
Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve fire department medical response unit designation.
Nice. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Next item, uh, fifth, uh, number five, request firefighter, hire firefighter.
So we have a new, new fireman, Will Hermanson, he's been on our department now for a few months, it was an oversight on my part of not bringing him to the council. So I'm bringing him to you now, because at the end of the year and we have to pay him, it was, hey, hey, you didn't get an approval, we did for Nick, but we didn't do it for Will that night. So I'm just asking for approval for William.
I actually know Will, he is, his wife used to work at, honestly, they're good people, so.
They are good.
I'd be happy to make a motion, Mister Mayor, to, uh, accept, or to make a motion to approve the fire department request to hire firefighter William Hermanson.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, item six, fire department coyote range mutual aid agreement.
So once again, this is paperwork from the Coyote Range Society, or Coyote Range Firemen's Association that we all belong to here in this area. Um, there was a mutual aid agreement signed probably a hundred years ago, we went to get that file at a meeting and nobody could produce the file, so they're like, let's update our paperwork. Um, we've agreed to the mutual aid agreement, we just need to have your signature on the back, so we can go forward for the next hundred and fifty years.
I make a motion to accept it.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Uh, last item, chief, fire department request for a new command vehicle. Two vehicles.
So what we have here is, we have our old Tahoe, it's, I think it's a two thousand and nine, um, our assistant chief drives it at this time, and it's spread out through our command staff when he's not in town. It needs an extensive amount of work to get it back in working order, um, we just don't feel like it's worth putting the money into it anymore. So we're looking at a new two thousand and twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado fifteen hundred, um, our, our fundraising account is going to buy it. So we're not asking for any spuns from the city at all, uh, we're gonna sell the Tahoe on GovDeals, and then the, the purchase of the truck is fifty-two oh eighty-four eighty-eight. And then the auto smith for outfitting is ten one twenty-eight sixty-two. Like, once again, you guys aren't paying a penny, we're taking care of it out of our fundraising account, so we're just looking for an approval to buy a new vehicle.
Now, is that gonna have the slide out?
Yes, absolutely, we'll never buy another one without that, that's, that's a back saver, back saver, yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll so move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Thank you, can I ask one other question? You brought up a thing about the land tonight with the J C's. So, for the last ten years, we've asked Stu Mills to use his property to land the helicopter on the tar, and the city of Nisswa has plowed that for us. Is that something we can continue to do?
I don't know why we couldn't.
Okay. I just know new ownerships, I figured it out.
Tom's giving the nod, so I think that's.
Tom's plowing it.
Okay, all right, just so that's still good, thank you, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
So now we are back to.
Number four.
F four. Um. Mister Timbler? The crap, uh, recommendation from planning commission reference topographic divide for Jethro Carpenter.
Alright, so the action requested, and thank you, um, tonight is to consider the planning commission's recommendation to deny return and redetermination of the topographic divide. Um, a little bit of background on this, there was an ask to the city to review a topographic divide determination made by the city and approved by the D N R in two thousand and nineteen. Um, meets and bounds subdivision application had been, um, previously been on the planning commission's agenda for August sixth, however, the applicant had requested it be pulled. At that time to provide additional information. Um, the meets and bounds subdivision proposal could not proceed under the previously made topographic divide determination without redetermination occurring. Uh, the proposal was reviewed by the planning commission at the regular meeting held on November sixth, and we have a motion to provide a recommendation to the city council. To deny redetermination of the topographic divide. After the planning commission meeting, the applicant requested to be heard at a city council's, uh, December seventeenth meeting, and the matter was added to the agenda for that purpose. And consideration for the planning commission's recommendation, since that time, the applicant has indicated an inability to attend. Tonight's meeting and is now requesting to be heard at January or February during the city council meetings. I have attached, uh, the relevant pages from the planning commission packet and the minutes from that meeting for review.
We also have received one letter from the public, which has been provided to the council.
Yep, comment attached this one.
Well, Stephen wasn't here when we went through all that, but I think that was designated in the approval of the. Platte and the development in the first place, so, uh, uh, one question I have is. Is if this were to be subdivided, that one of the parcels wouldn't have access to public road, correct?
So there is a meandering property line that comes through the platte that is, um, designated for dedicated part, uh, public right of way. Um, so it would just need to have that access tie into a public road somehow through the subdivision, whether it be through the, um, the one parcel or not, so.
It's a big impact.
Well, I can't see, I can't see approving this, I mean, I can. I, I would follow the, uh, recommendations from the planning commission, that's where I'm looking at.
I don't know that that's the question tonight, though, is it? Is it that we're gonna postpone this? Is that, is that the question we're here to figure out?
That would be potential, if you see the, that you would like to, you know.
You can accept it, deny it, or table it.
All right, well, I guess, you know. Kinda knowing some of the history on this, and then being at the meeting, you know, maybe this question more for Tom. Just remove the person in the situation completely out of the picture. Just, does the parcel meet the requirements? By our rules where it could be subdivided?
With the previously acknowledged topographic divide determination, um, that was dated back in two thousand and nineteen. The lands below the twelve thirty-six contour are beholden to natural environment standards, which would be a two hundred foot lot width, which it's currently plotted for. On the southern shore, or the southern, um, property of the platte, be the north shore of Roy Lake, a general development lake.
So, you know, it couldn't be subdivided with that topographic divide determination being what it is, which is why he's asking for it to be different. Um, you know, in fairness to Jethro, who may or may not like the application, don't know what you're gonna decide with that, but. He did ask, um, for this thing to be continued, because he couldn't be here, and it's been pretty easy to deal with in many things, and so it makes sense to me that you would do that.
Table it.
Yeah, correct.
And so that you can hear their presentation, I know you were here, Joe.
Right.
Jesse was here, but others weren't, and that seems only fair.
So, so then also with that, so the current, I'll say jurisdiction of the, uh, topographical. Work that was done by the state, not by the city, correct? That was done.
So the determination was, um, made and proposed by the city and approved by the D N R. In two thousand and nineteen.
So then, legal question again, at the time that it was made. Did we as staff have the correct training and ability to do that? Did W S N help with it? Because that's not, um, that's not a standard determination made without a lot of. Prudentials in that area. So, were we, were we qualified to make that determination if it was made by the city at that time?
Joe, I would just say yes, not having been a party to that, not have any expertise in that, but as I.
Joe, I would just say yes, not having been a party to that and not have any expertise in that, but as I recall, Brittany Cotner did make the determination with whatever information she had, did run it by D N R, D N R did, did affirm her opinion on that. But what went into that cookbook of how she determined that? I don't know that anybody here knows that.
Because that is what they are challenging, correct? From my understanding, is what went into that?
Yeah, well, I mean, you were here at the meeting. The, the gist of the argument was the science that was applied, whatever it was, was incorrect, and they think they have different science to apply.
Yeah, and so I just and so those are my questions and maybe kinda fill everyone else in so we know what we're looking at. It's just, you know, um, only because I know, I'm not gonna speak for him, but I don't think it'll be done here, you know, and so I didn't know. You know? Does the city um, does the city have any responsibility in defending that um, ruling that was made by Brittany?
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that it's the city's in the position of defending it. It wasn't, it wasn't contested at the time.
Yeah.
And so you could say, you, you could say that it was waived at that time because it was an issue at that time.
Right, it's a big issue.
Yeah, it was an issue. And the plat decision got accepted, the subdivision process went through, and so I don't know that the city's in the position of defending anything now. He's just asking for another bite at the apple on that based on what they think is different information or better information. That's kinda what I got from what they were saying at the meeting, at the planning commission meeting.
Yeah, I guess that I was just looking for some clarification on what they were asking of us on this.
Steve, if they, or Tom, whichever.
Back then?
Yeah, back then it was a yeah, it was an interesting whole thing that we went through. Um, if if you're gonna discuss changing okay, the divide. Does that not bring the all, the whole plan that was approved back then back up then? Because there's a whole bunch of issues arena with that that affected both the environmental lake, Ray Lake, and then it affected Roy Lake. It affected the number of docking positions per lot allowed. Now you're adding more. Does it, does that basically then start from scratch and go all the way through and bring it all back again?
No, that's not what the applicant wants.
I, well, I understand that's not what the applicant wants, but would that be a, would, would that be something the city would be would have to look at or should look at or what?
Well, as long as Shoreland District classifications go, natural environment is the most restrictive of lot size minimums. And so I would say there's potential to um, well, you wouldn't be going more restrictive, I would say. In this case, with the current proposals, they've offered two different um, topographic divides, one pre-grading, one post-grading. Um, attached in the packet right, right beyond my memo. Um, those are the two proposals. And so the potential would be to then re relook at the lots touching Roy Lake to go under general development, which would be less restrictive as far as lot size minimums, so.
And, and I guess I have a question with that, maybe somebody can answer that this that I was confused about at the meeting. The pre-grading and the post-grading that happened on you know, I'll say the whole site, but not specifically to this parcel. And I think that's what they were asking. Is that correct? I mean, have you?
For the proposed meets and bounds sub?
The, to see, was it?
I have not, no.
Yeah, so I guess you know, I went out there myself to try and look and understand this. And from what I can see is there's a whole lot of area that is actually still virgin and untouched. And that's what I was trying to understand the other night. This question, there's grading that had been done, and I don't know, I don't you know, I was just curious and I drove by there and I look and I'm like, well, there's, you know, I'm not defending it or anything one way or the other, but that's what I'm trying to understand. It, it, no work has actually been done on this yet. And so from my understanding, and so is that what is does it constitute the whole thing? Or does it just take in the termination this? Because then, you know, it goes to, it's a survey issue, right? And topo and from my understanding is they have different topo based upon the surveyor that provided. Is that the, is that the real issue? Does anybody know?
The ask at this point would be to reevaluate the topographic divide, not the subdivision itself of that lot. So but getting that hurdle out of the way is what
You're asking a question, and John asked a question that I think you need to hear from the applicant about. I've got an opinion about at least what John asked, but I'd like
Sure.
just reserve that, but those are questions you should be asking.
Yeah, because that's, that's when I left that meeting, I was wondering, but then it didn't sound like many people have been on site. So I drove out there to look and then I was even more confused because the dirt hasn't been moved, so.
Right, they were offering two different topographic divides, one on the benefit if the, um, if the planning commission or deciding body wanted to go with the post-grading, then at least they had that delineated and and as an option for consideration, rather than having to table it and kick the can to another meeting. In that case, they were coming forward with two different pathways. Say they wanted the post-grading one as their preferred option. Um, but then the deciding body decided that they didn't want to entertain that because that could be a slippery slope, I mean, accept things after manipulation of the land. Um, then at least we have the natural one that was promoted, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Maybe I would say, you know, if this is gonna get postponed, you know, to a meeting, then what I would say if they're asking us to make decisions is that at least couple of us actually do onsite meetings, so I can understand what they're talking about because.
I'd be up for that.
Yeah, does, does that make sense? Cause I went out there afterwards and I'm just like, well, this this dirt hasn't been touched. You can, if there's a topo issue, it's still virgin. We can figure out what the topo issue is between the ones surveying. So I guess that's what I would recommend. You know, it's a hot topic, and I would say for us doing our due diligence, a, a site a site visit would be appropriate, in my opinion.
I'll make a motion that we, based on the advice of council, that we table the matter. Um, and we can table it till, what is he? February?
He said January or February.
January, if we can, how long can we table it till? It doesn't ha, it has to come up like.
February is probably best.
February.
You're on the clock on this, and I think the messaging I saw, they were fine with that.
Till February at the latest. And then if they wanna come up in January, they can, up to you guys.
Well, I would suggest it'd be cleaner to identify the February council meeting.
Uh, well, I
To that agenda.
Bring it back to council in February.
Right.
That'd be my motion.
Okay. We can facilitate an opportunity for council to go onsite with the applicant as well.
Comment about that, but I don't have a second yet.
Oh.
So.
Second.
Okay, um, I would I, I would suggest it probably would make sense since it's already a published meeting that they could have a site visit with the co, the whole council if they wanted to, or those council members that want to or can. Um, then the new mayor will be here. She can go as well, um, if she wishes to, um, can go to that at the public or the planning zoning meeting. It probably wouldn't hurt for the P and Z members if they were to go out there and do a site visit.
I feel like a couple of them have. I, I don't know who actually had gone out, but.
But that would be an opportunity. It's already a published meeting. You don't have to worry about quorum issues and things of that nature.
Well, it's still a quorum of the council. We just, we have, we would post it that.
Yeah, but it's already posted and we, if the whole council wanted to go to a planning and zoning meeting, they could, they could be there. It's not gonna constitute. I'm just saying at the P and Z meeting, if you did a site visit and council members wanted to go at that time, then you can not only talk with them, but you got everybody involved there.
Yes, but we would be discussing city business, so I, not that decisions would be made, but I would still.
Right, not a decision, but.
I would still just separately identify it, but yes, if that works for council, we'll coordinate and see if that works.
Even individually, council members get with Tim. Go out there. There. Okay. So, motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay. Approved fee schedule for cannabis THC license.
The fee schedule proposed, um, is consistent with the language in state statute about how the city can impose fees, um, licenses for cannabis and THC. Um, so we would just apply the appropriate um, license and state fee amount and, and utilize that um, formula for how we would administer the fees accordingly.
Anybody have any questions? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve the fee schedule for cannabis THC license as presented.
I guess.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. City Hall Improvement Project Authorization to Bid.
This is a request from Woodset with respect to our city hall improvement project. Uh, we have been, the building committee has been working with Woodset and High Tech. Things have been moving forward according to schedule, and in December it was planned to bring forward a request to bid the project. What that means through the Gordian process is essentially High Tech will be finalizing the cost, uh, the final costs through Gordian. So we're not actually going out for a public bid, but it's just one step to ensure we've checked that box in the process. And we would uh, bring back that final information to the council before we would proceed with construction.
Instead of improvements, can we call it taking care of the things that are broken?
Yes, there you go, yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Woodset's recommendation.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Prove brothers resolution authorizing the rebuilding America infrastructure with sustainability and equity raise grant application for the Minnesota Department of Transportation.
This is likely a primer topic for the council, uh, because as you probably noticed, there's a resolution and there isn't anything uh, to support or provide some more context. So this has to do with a grant opportunity that MinDOT identified that um, applies to the corridor study that they're working on. So they are working on a possible grant uh, for Rainier uh, Baxter, Niswau and Crowing County, uh, to include some of the high priority intersection improvements from a safety perspective uh, to potentially acquire federal dollars. Uh, federal dollars are easier for MinDOT to administer at the local level than state dollars are. Uh, what I don't have and they are working on is specific intersection information and cost information that would go along with that. Uh, they shared with me that there would be no local cost component requirement for this grant. However, there's usually always some kind of local cost share, just incidental if nothing else. Um, so they are working on this. I appreciate that they are finding opportunities to um, obtain some federal grant dollars, which is great. Uh, we can table this until January. Uh, their deadline to submit is January twenty-third, and our next meeting is the twenty-first, so there would be time to provide more information, but I wanted to at least make you aware that they are working on this and potentially bring some uh, specific intersections that are in need of improvement, um, opportunities, uh, dollars to, to Niswau, so.
Which, do we know which intersections in Niswau specifically? I think we know a couple of them. Um,
Hazelwood is one.
Hazelwood is one, and I think the uh, Nashway to access there by Nashway was another, but are, if maybe I'm jumping way, way too far, but are they gonna have information available as to you know, what they're going to do?
Yes, there is a little bit of unknown yet.
Have any input in, I mean, it's their role.
Well, the city has had a lot of input thus far.
They've been good.
Yes, so we are still evaluating some options for which type of improvements will actually be the one to land into the grant application. And I think that's important for the council to see specifically what types of improvements would be proposed for different intersections. So they are putting that together. Bolton and Mank is working on that and um, I had requested whatever they could provide late last week, but they're still working on those details, so. Um, if you're comfortable with um, table in this until January, I think that would be just fine, and we can bring back more information at that time. Otherwise, you're more than welcome to accept this. I just don't have details to go with it at this point.
Table till January is my thought.
Make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion to table this uh, resolution until January, until we have further information.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Uh, next item, accept the resignation of Police Chief Craig Taylor?
No.
No.
He's not here, so.
We have to table that one too.
Can't retire him.
Already congratulated him, so. I'll make a motion to accept Police Chief Taylor's notice of retirement effective June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Second it.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Do we know how many years of service Chief Taylor has had for the city in this one?
Twenty-eight.
I was gonna, that's the number I had in my head. I was gonna look at Maggie in case she.
It's outstanding.
Yes. Yes, more to come, absolutely, about retirement, and we will take an opportunity to celebrate that um, before his last day. Um, and as I noted in my memo, I think more conversation can be had in January with the council about the next steps in the process and how we wanna move forward with that.
Succession, you mean?
Okay.
So.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved. Opposed? Recommendation from Parks Commission Reference Playground RFQ. Amber.
Good evening. Um, in your packet tonight, you have three proposals that receive, we received um, from playground companies regarding the City Park Playground Replacement project, um, that would be in conjunction with the greater planning that we're doing for City Park Phase One, Phase Two um, and applying for potentially the D N R Outdoor Ret Grant. Um, they would need specifications for the playground component. Um, so before you have those three proposals, they are all source well um, contracts, so it would satisfy the bid requirement was, which is why we kind of went this route. Um, the Parks Commission did review all of them, and they do have a recommendation before you tonight to go forward with flagship recreation. Um, there would be no cost for the design work. The cost will come into play for procurement and installation.
And just, just so everybody knows, I mean, we have what, maybe two years left on the playground? Maybe?
Approximately, it's twenty-eight years old.
We have zero, we have zero years left on the ice rink. That's might as well say gone. We might as well just get in bulldozers and rip it up. Cause we have no chillers, no nothing there. We don't know if there's freon in there or um, glycol in the playground, so we gotta move on some of this quickly, but that's just me.
Do I have a recommendation?
Have a question.
Yes.
Sure.
I have a question for you, Amber. On the budget impact, it says current estimated cost, comma, used for fundraising purposes, comma, are six hundred ninety thousand for an inclusive destination playground. What does the used for fundraising purposes mean?
That is.
You're saying the cost to advertise?
Yeah, that's the estimated cost that we're anticipating until we get kinda further down the line. Obviously, the playground company is gonna work within the budget we give them and the size container size we give them. Um, so that's the goal we've set as of right now. Um, but we, the scope of work is still a little bit loose.
Does that kind of include a ten percent contingency?
Um, it includes some professional services, um, so like the installation costs would have these, um, where the planning and that kind of Woodset is figuring out the container size in the design, um, and then there'd be some grading work and we can determine if that's in-house or outsourced, and there's a little bit of wiggle room on some of that stuff.
Okay.
So I wouldn't say contingency, but there's professional services within that amount.
Um, do you know any updates or anything? I know I don't see anybody from the line. Do you know any updates or anything? I know I don't see anybody from the Lions here, but there is that other Lions. Grant and funding in that had specific requirements as far as like ADA and, you know, different handicap accessible.
Yeah, I haven't talked to the Lions recently about it. Last I talked to them was September. My understanding is that. To apply through Lions International, the plans for the playground have to be pretty close to ready. And so by going through this design process, we'd have the information we need to apply for both a DNR Outdoor Ret Grant and then see if the Lions would like to pursue in a partnership as well. Mostly we have to have the design plans of what, how many swings and the fall depths and things like that.
Sure.
Planed out in order to get money.
Because a lot of those projects have to be shovel ready before you can put in for grants.
Correct.
Did you guys go down to Flagship then?
I drive by it all the time. I should have toured it when I had the opportunity, but I didn't.
Where's it at?
Delano.
Oh.
Um, Landscape Structures is the playground company. Flagship is the company that does the design. So Landscape Structures is the manufacturer and they're based on a Delano.
Got it. The underlayment, what are they looking or proposing for that?
Haven't gotten that far yet.
You haven't got that far yet?
No.
They do a good job. I know that.
Do you want to make a motion? Entertained?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to award the city in this while playground project a flagship recreation as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Vote number ten, recommendation to appoint to Parks Commission. You've all got the application.
I'll make a motion.
Bruce Imholt.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bruce Imholt to the City of Nisswa Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
Thank you.
Recommendation from Planning Commission Reference Twenty Twenty Five Meeting Dates.
Hey Amber, is the ice? How's the ice over there right now? I won't tell anybody.
Good evening again. Uh, so proposed is the Twenty Twenty Five Planning Commission Meeting Dates and Timelines. Key concepts that I want to outline on this calendar are as follows. I'd like to introduce development review team meetings, which are placeholder dates for. Me to designate at the city hall here to meet with landowners and their authorized agents to meet and discuss proposals that require planning commission and board of adjustment review. These types of meetings already occur informally throughout the week. And the end goal of their introduction is to provide information about the prerequisite steps to apply for a variance conditional use permit, interim use permits. Subdivisions and others that can be deemed complete. By setting these dates aside now, I'll promote time management throughout the calendar year while providing clear direction regarding process and ordinance requirements. And then another key element is standardizing lead time for deadlines to attend meetings. I propose five Fridays before the meeting's occurrence to allow time to deem complete, perform review, as well as to publish notice in the paper and neighboring property owners and stakeholders. And then two Fridays before the development, development review team meeting to allow me to create an agenda for my day or morning that day, so.
We have a motion.
I got a question.
Sure.
The purple represents the deadline for. Applicants to submit their stuff.
Just to put in a request to attend on the blue Mondays. So the purple Friday would allow me the next week to come up with a timeline. Potentially based on region stakeholders that would be involved if, you know, MinDOT is applicable and chose to want to come into one. I can put notice out to them and see if they want to attend. In my experience at the county level during these development review team meetings, you get hit and miss with these other stakeholders, whether they choose to attend or not, but.
Sure, so this calendar doesn't have any timelines for applicants. Deadlines on it.
The yellow would be the submission deadline for the planning commission meeting and the purple would be. The deadline, the purple and blue are pretty much informal, but like the purple would be. For example, let's look at January, January tenth would be when I would like to see. Information about attending a development review team meeting occurring on the twenty first of January. And again, these happen informally and I can accommodate these development review team meetings offhand unless this was something to become more. Prerequisite and standardized, but this is just again, just me budgeting my time. And making myself available at the city hall, so I can then otherwise look at Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays for site visits. Permit follow-ups. And manage my time.
Sure, the only thing with that, I mean, topic for the council, I'm not sure if retains this, but it does. Right now, you know. For instance, somebody misses. The third deadline. That pushes them out into March, correct? If I'm reading this correct, to get on the calendar.
Third deadline, you're talking purple?
So somebody wants to come in here and go for a variance.
Sure.
If they don't get your, the stuff to you by January third for the February meeting, they're pushed out till March.
Correct, unless they sought a special meeting, which has its own process.
I'm just saying. For. It's just continuously becoming a bigger issue in the construction industry and world to be pushed out. Two months timeframe to get on agenda and hold a project. I'd like to see that timeline get shortened up.
I second that.
Steven, can you?
Not, it has been shorter in the past and I'd like to see us shorten that up. It's just, it's too long of a time period.
So the five week lead time allows for accommodation of certain things in our ordinance, like getting notices out to neighbors, getting publications out in the paper. For example. If I wanted a notice out in the paper for, let's say, February fourth on this agenda, I need to have ten days notice for it to be in a paper. And column which manages the legals for the Echo requires it to be in there. The Wednesday before the Wednesday publication date, so there's lead time involved to at least get that publication out, which is a statutory requirement. And then also for neighboring mailings. So my proposal, I have five is pretty much to structure. A complete application getting dropped off that could be talked about at these development review team meetings so that I can. Educate people on requirements and get them equipped for a complete application.
Right, but that's, you know, the public notification and the neighbors is just a small. I'll say lane of this, you know, to come in and just do site reviews, stuff like that, that does not need publication. Still, I'm going to push back hard on this. It does not need pushed out two months. So there is, there are certain things, yeah, the variance, you know, with that, but everything else, which is ninety percent of what people want. Does not need a two month requirement and it has. It has not been this way. This was only changed to this format only about. Two, three years ago that this extended deadline came into place and it's just, it's just too, too long of a deadline, you know. I'm in the landscape industry, obviously client comes in and said, you know, May, we only have the summer to work, May and go, geez. We can't even get an answer for you until in July because it's May fourth and the deadline was on the third. We're not even going to know what to do until in July sometime. That timeline just doesn't work. And, and we need to change it. So I, I understand, you know, in the timelines for the papers and stuff, that's fine. But that is a very small issue and we need to go back to a tighter schedule like we had before.
We have, if I could, we, we have shortened that extended timeline a little bit. It used to be more like six weeks. Pushed out and even if it's five, I mean, we, we try to keep it as tight as possible, but it is a department of one. The paper, the newspaper publication component has been extended greater, so we have to have things done, reviewed and completed earlier in the process to allow for. That publication to go out, so in essence for January, I think our city planner has. Seven days to review plans and to determine if they're complete and, and ready for publication. It's not a lot of time if you have multiple applications. So we definitely want to be as accommodating as we can without also creating constraints for our department of one to be able to do their job well, so.
Correct, but leave the publications out of it because the publications, there's only a small sector that requires publication. For instance, sign ordinance, there's no publications needed for that. We don't need to push that out two months. We don't need to, I, I mean, I don't want to sit here and go through the whole list tonight, but. Ninety percent of the stuff does not need the timeline for the publications of what people want to come before. The board to have their questions answered and waiting two months. In this environment, in the construction field, I mean, Jesse's in the construction world, waiting two months on an answer is not acceptable. I mean, it's just, it's.
In a construction window of.
Right, it, it just doesn't work. We, we need to come up with a, with a different way to do it.
I think that'd be a good opportunity perhaps, us three can get together, we can talk and discuss maybe what our thoughts are and trying to streamline it.
Sure.
And make it a little bit.
So notifications in the paper, as I understand it, would be anything that's subject to a public hearing, is that right? So.
Yeah.
Variances, conditional use permits, interim use permits, ordinance amendments. You could synonymize this to be a public hearing calendar. Any of the other items like a meets and bounds subdivision that would be reviewed upon by the planning commission would be a new business item.
Right, but right now, you know, somebody, prime example, somebody wants a sketch plan review. The whole purpose of them getting on the agenda is the sketch plan review so they can get the feedback.
So these deadlines would not be for sketch plan reviews. That is a ten day prior to the meeting deadline for meetings.
And so that would be one of them, but we could add, you know, the other requirements that would just be a ten day, you know, and I think we need to split the list between them and come up with a comprehensive list.
I, I would say that what to Jesse's point and to your point. What, you know, meeting with the city planner and bringing the concerns up and stuff and, and just, you know, work with them, you know, maybe. But, you know, putting your heads together, things can be streamlined, certain things can be set off to this, okay, well, I see that, okay.
And I'm happy to engage people at the pie in the sky phase if they're thinking about something in the future. That might even be two months out and planning on their side, engage me sooner and I'd be happy to discuss it at any of these development review team meetings to, you know, say, okay, if you are looking to break ground, May, let's start talking now.
My clients just don't work like that, sorry. That's not, that's not normal. So, yeah, I, I wish if you tell me how to do that, it's just not the, not the. Not realistic in the construction world in this, in this area, in this culture. So that's why we got to do something to streamline it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion if we can table this calendar discussion until. The city planner, council member Hall and myself can be able to get a meeting on the calendar. Before the January meeting and then to be able to table us till then.
Table till January? What you're saying?
Table this until January, but to still publish that we have the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, January seventh.
And how would you like me to handle the timeline for the February meeting?
I would just leave it open right now. I mean, do you have people that want to get on February?
I do.
I would.
I don't think the idea that regardless is to change the meeting date.
So change the dates, change the timeline. So like right now, prime example, you know, we're here in, what's the date today?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth and people want to get on the February meeting and they can't get in the February meeting.
They certainly can get on the February meeting at this time.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'd say we want to try and meet as soon as possible, you know, and discuss it to, you know, to look at this.
Have a motion to table till January?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Just as a reminder to everybody, and I know this, you know, I, I sound like a broken record, but this is why when you. When, when we get our packets and stuff, please get with that staff. Take, take that second and get at it. You know, I don't see a problem with the schedule, but I don't do what you guys do. You see things that I don't deal with, so that it's important that we get with staff and let them know because they may not see it the way we do, so.
Yeah, and we just need time to discuss it ourselves.
Item twelve, requests from Public Works to fill maintenance tech position.
Good evening, everybody. What this is, is we want to backfill the maintenance tech position. As most of you are probably aware, we promoted from within and that's created a vacancy in the maintenance department. And so what we're looking to do is get permission to advertise to refill that position that was vacated.
Make a motion that we move ahead with this?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
Approve updated road maintenance agreement, renewal wilderness road. This is pretty. Every year or every so many years. Just, we share it with B-Quot, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And are we still doing? Down Middle Cullen Drive, we still do inland drive and that.
This is for wilderness.
This is for wilderness, but that.
Yeah.
We still do the other one, right? They don't come in here and do down middle Cullen Drive?
Yeah, they do.
They do.
At the very end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve the updated road maintenance agreement for Wilderness Road Twenty Twenty Five to Twenty Twenty Nine as presented.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Memo from Nisswa Chamber of Commerce Reference. What did I miss?
Nothing, I just said, thank you, Tom.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Memo from Nisswa Chamber of Commerce Reference Downtown Master Plan Council Information. Everyone had a chance to go through that.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for Cali or anyone? Anyone?
So far so good. Okay, awesome. See you in January.
Uh, Park and Rec's request, final front transfer for Gully Trail. So I'm taking it the punch list is completed. Everything is done. Okay? Questions for Amber, the city engineer? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, for the transfer of the funds to reimburse what we had to match on the city level, correct? That's what this is approving.
Yes, in part it's the remaining matching dollars, so Lake Shore covered sixty percent, Nisswa covers forty percent. So you have the identified park funds that were initially approved as part of the project and then there's costs that are not reimbursable such as the land. Appraisals, there are archaeological study and then some of the other incidentals along the way.
Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion. To approve the request for action for the final funds transfer for the Gully Trail as presented.
Say it.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, set city council organizational meeting date for January sixth, five P M.
So moved? I'll second.
Discussion?
I think we discussed last meeting that we're all available for that.
All those in favor? Uh, approve um. Supervisor, MN PEA supervisor contract for January one through December thirty first of two thousand five, twenty twenty five, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve the Minnesota PEA supervisor contract for January first through December thirty first, twenty twenty five as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Uh, we'll go down to old business, uh, Verizon cell tower site plan update discussion, did everyone get that?
No, I have information for you today. Uh, Verizon was here this afternoon, uh, met with myself, the city planner and the public works director. Um, to look at their preferred location, which will be at the fire hall. Uh, they felt that. Um, the cemetery property and the property where the city's newly acquired land would not be as advantageous as um, the fire hall location. Um, so they are looking to move forward with that process and would bring the required applications. There will be some variances required to planning commission to proceed with the next steps. Uh, one question that came up that would like some council input on. Kiki, is there still a photo I think I have of, if you could put that on the screen, thank you. Is part of the tower, we are looking to consolidate uh, some of the existing. Uh, the, the tower that we have there uh, with the antenna for the fire department would be proposed to be taken down. And we'd move the antenna to the new tower. Uh, the other item is the um, siren. That is potentially able to be added to the tower as well. Um. Adding multiple things potentially increases cost and would lessen the lease payment that Verizon would pay to the city. And the question is, does the council have a preference on if the siren is taken down and relocated? Or if that's more, we just work through the logistics at a staff level and bring forward a recommendation when they, when they make their application to the planning commission. So any feedback on or preference you would have would be helpful.
Is the new site gonna have that generator backup system on it? Is that what they're proposing? Because that is there because it's hooked to the generator.
Yeah, so the generate, the, they are planning to replace the generator to. Um, allow for the need that Verizon would have and then also the ability to run the fire hall. So they put a new generator um, in the place of the existing generator. Um, that would feed to the tower, um, not a problem. And if you kept that. Hole there for the siren, then we could tie that back in, um, or it can be utilized at the new tower as well.
They need the siren.
Right, why was, why was that, why is the new land not of interest for them, even if it was a hundred to two hundred foot tower?
Uh, it doesn't help the service issues downtown. And on eighteen, so they are proposing to bring to the planning commission. Um, a tower, um, a hundred and ninety feet? The maximum our ordinance allows is a hundred and fifty feet, so they would be requesting a variance, so they recognize that there's a request for that. Um, I do have, we talked about this last month, I do have if the council would like to see some of the mapping. Um, growth with the tower, different tower heights, so you can look at that to see, but it wouldn't, so it wouldn't achieve their goals. For the congestion downtown with all of the people and the events and then some of the challenges we discussed with the neighborhood um, back. Behind city hall and then across eighteen.
Yeah, the higher you go, doesn't mean the further out you'll go.
If they want hundred and fifty, it just to maximize the improvement. Based on feedback and what they're looking for, that's what they would propose.
Is that your antenna all the way on the top, Joe?
Yeah, the repeater that connects with the lake room.
So basically, it's omnidirectional right now. Okay, so then if you're gonna go a hundred and some feet up. You're not gonna be able to put that on top of that, so you're gonna end up with a directional antennas probably more than one or two. Of some kind, some typically maybe eighty, but um. Depending on how high up they go, are they gonna? They would flip the cost for putting that up there, our fire department antenna? Cause then you're running, it's repeated and then you're running the shielded cable down and everything else.
They, they would, but it would come as rent abatement ultimately. We would see less rent at the end of the day, if we wanted to do one or both.
I, I can tell you that. A hundred and eighty some feet from some of the neighbors I spoke with around my place is like, ah, and then. Kinda like deer hunting, you can't cover the whole woods. There's, and I know that's what they wanna do, I mean, I get their point, but, okay, but. Good luck in change.
So if the council doesn't have a strong preference, we would potentially opt to leave it just to minimize their cost. And the resulting. Decrease in rent, but certainly.
Yeah, I guess that would require more discussion, you know, we've actually had to climb that. And the one over there who's responsible for climbing it and working on it and stuff. You know, all those with the lease agreements, all that stuff, you know, I don't, I don't, you know. Sean has actually climbed him himself.
The higher you go on a tower with your antenna, the different cable type you need and the shielded type cables you need. And it's not necessary, it's like everything else, it's a simple thing, we're gonna put an antenna up here, not as simple as you think it is. You guys, you know. Um, do you have communication issues of any kind anywhere that you've been with your portables or anything, has it been?
Not, not since they switched to the nine hundred. You know, really, I mean, that really took care of a lot of stuff, but it's still useful to have.
Okay, well, that's the update I, they will move forward through the planning commission process and certainly keep you informed. As it comes. Tom, you can come up if you have a comment, please.
As far as helicopter, is, is there an issue with either one of those for the helicopter that you're aware of?
There's, well, they do, they will land back there, um. You know. No, I mean, it, it, that really comes down to each pilot. Some pilots won't, won't land there and they wanna land in the ball field, the next one, he'll drop it right in there wherever we ask them. So that's really pilot by pilot and we, we never know. And so when we request an L Z. Sometimes, you know, the pilot ultimately has the say and they'll, they'll wave off and they'll, they'll give us another location where they wanna land.
You gotta ask them if they're a veteran or not a veteran, veterans will drop anywhere, non-veterans won't.
The, the guys that were back in Vietnam, they would land in between those two towers, so. So it's just, it, that, that's really what it boils down to is whoever the pilot is that we're talking to.
Thank you.
Um, then we'll, if we're good with that, then we can go to council reports before we'll. Uh, city council members, Joe?
I had a chance to go to Washington last week for a uh, event, ended up having an opportunity to sit down with Congressman Pete Staubler for about twenty five, thirty minutes. Gracious to give that much time. We had a lot of discussion in regards to uh, my businesses and what we're doing, but also city in this one came up quite a bit. Uh, invited him to come here to city hall if he ever had the opportunity, he said he's gonna be coming around sometime in the first quarter. See if something can come to fruition where we can get some interface with him. In regards to some of the projects and the challenges that we're facing, see what federal support. Uh, he'd be able to help get behind to be able to provide us any additional insights on grants. Uh, subsidies or any additional type of funding that we can try to get in for what we have ahead and uh. I had a chance to meet Speaker Mike Johnson, it's pretty neat and he's very short. You turned the recording off for that, right? Nice guy, though, like very, very nice guy. So pray for our new elected leaders when they open up their uh, hundred nineteenth Congress. They have a lot of work ahead of them and hope they do a good job.
I have nothing. Nothing, okay. Well, I see our new mayor-elect is here, I just, your gavel is awaiting, it is right here, so. May you wield it judiciously and.
He never uses it.
I used it once, scared the bejesus out of you. Anyway, um, so uh, January. Will take over, so there we are, and other than that, I have nothing else, so. Um, we are gonna be moving into closed session next, so I will.
I just wanted to thank you for your years of service to the city and residents. And congratulation on the incoming mayor.
I echo that. You've done a great job for us and thank you for everything that you've contributed over. I think you've had two terms in council or one term in council and two as mayor. Many years of service and I know we spend hours sometimes in this chamber, our families, uh. I know I have to explain to my wife why I'm not there eating cold dinner at nine or nine thirty or ten o'clock at night sometimes, but. I think at the end of the day, as councilman, former council member, uh, Don Jacobson said, it's a thankless job, are you sure you wanna do it? I, I still look back on all this and I'm sure he did too, and I hope you do as well, it is worth it. Uh, not only do we do it for our families and our residents, but we do it for one another. And uh, thank you for your service. And then one, one other note, we have to add an honored council member Jacobs, uh, Jacobson's uh, tradition.
We wanna wish everyone here a very merry Christmas. It's not happy holidays, it's Merry Christmas. Do not forget the reason that we celebrate this season. So Merry Christmas to everybody, may your families be safe and sound and may you all have a blessed new year.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
I will make a motion uh, that we recommend, recommend a motion to move into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five. Subdivision three C, reference consideration of offer for property purchase. P I D numbers two eight one five zero six three seven, two eight one five zero five four seven. Two eight one five zero six zero four. Discussion, yes.
Could you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Um, I've been at a few meetings now where there's been closed sessions. Um, they have the appearance of secrecy from the taxpayers. Um, and um, I'm just a little concerned, a little puzzled, if we're the ones paying the taxes. And you folks represent us, why can't I, why can't we be present at these meetings? But why the appearance of secrecy?
We'll defer to the lawyer, city attorney.
Because I would like to learn as much as possible about the goings in our city.
Uh, in, in some instances such as the one tonight, the reason for that is because there is a negotiation about. Uh, money and, and just like you wouldn't wanna have the other side know what you're talking about when you're negotiating something with money. That's why these sorts of meetings aren't public. There are other reasons under the statute to close a meeting, but this one tonight is about. Purchase price for land and as I said, if you were, if you were gonna sell a piece of land or buy a piece of land, you wouldn't want the other party to know what you were thinking. With respect to the negotiation, that's the easiest way to explain why these meetings are closed sometimes.
And I appreciate the, the question, also wanted to just um, offer that. Final decisions by the city council are made in open public session. So anything finalized comes before the council to approve, so you would see that. So this is just a negotiation component.
Yeah, the issue that I see too is that we have to dig a, as taxpayers, we have to dig pretty darn deep. To try to learn about what's going on, like myself, I've been to what, four or five meetings now. And I'm learning, I'm just barely scratching the surface of, of what's to learn. And unless we start from the bottom, being educated, how can you possibly learn what's going on in just that one? Speck of time that you're mentioning that we can attend.
And I'm always happy to share what I can, so feel free to call, I certainly could have provided. Um, the properties that we're discussing and say, well, these are the parcels, if nothing else, at least if I give a little context, but certainly reach out anytime, happy to share with what we can.
To that is, reach out to the elected officials, okay? Um, ask them, talk to them. If you have a question about planning and zoning, to um, get a hold of our city planner, ask. Um, absolutely, I mean, we're, they're here to serve you, they're, they're public employees, they're, they work for you. Um, and just ask questions and sometimes they can give you answers, sometimes they can't. Depends on what the question is or what type of information it is, personal data, things like that, but reach out and ask. Um, it, you know, you, you have every right to do that and you should, I encourage people to do it. Um, all the city council members, for example, have email addresses that are online. You can reach out, my, for myself, my cellphone and everything was online, I mean, I'm just, I was, I'm an open book, so. Um, reach out and talk to them if you have a question about, even sometimes people get upset. With like, say what the police do, I was a police officer for thirty years. Ask, you call me up, talk to me, talk to my chief, whatever, you know, I mean, just ask. Um, um, and I think a lot of people, I for some reason hesitate to do that and I don't know why. Um, I've never figured that out, but. You know, some of it's, you're busy, we're like, I get it, but yeah, there is a lot to know and um. When you know it all and you don't, you, there's, you have nothing else to learn, that's the time to get out.
I'm gonna throw Bruce and myself under the bus, but we're both seniors, he's a couple of years older than I am. Um, we're both retired, so I've got a lot of time, you know, people know that, so they either come over or they call. And I discuss with them, if I don't have an answer, I direct them where to go or help them come in. But yes, it's an eye opener, isn't it? Sit on this side, it's, I thought I knew stuff, but no.
Mr. Dude, I think your point beckons even to deeper conversation that. I think any of us here are more than happy, more than willing to have, there's never been, and I say this as a fellow taxpayer. I say this as a fellow citizen of this town that's lived here since I was born, I went to that elementary school across the street. I hope that the voters that voted for me to get into this position have a little bit of sense of trust that I'm trying to look out. We're trying to look out for the best due diligence and process of your monies. And the investment of that or the tax base, especially when there's things. I, I, I see enough, I think we all see enough that there are some opinions on the matter that we're trying to move things without. Any opinion taken or given or asked for or not asked for, we are as transparent on these matters. As we always have been since I've been on this council. And I think that the steps of getting additional information to the public, there can definitely be areas of improvement there. We've made that very clear since we had, just most recently, the downtown, um, I'm gonna butcher the name of it again, downtown master. Plan. But there's a lot of lessons learned from that, for example, we paused, we're not in a sprint in the city of ours. We're maintaining tradition here because we value it so and. I hope that there is at least a little bit of sense of trust. And if there's improvements that we can all make, we need to hear that. If I don't get the constructive criticism from my wife on how I can make the bed a better every single morning, it's not gonna be done. I at least not put the toilet lid down every morning, but it's small steps at a time. This is great, though, and I encourage everybody, especially those listening online. On various applications or platforms that have opinions on the matter that believe that what I'm discussing right now is to the total contrary. Please participate, please sit in these seats as you all have done, thank you for staying the entire night, it's eight thirty. You guys are gonna have a plate of cold food at home, but uh, we wanna, we wanna incite that, we want conversation, otherwise. It does seem one sided and it, we don't want it to be that way. So, thank you for attending the past few meetings, it's, it's been noticed, I did the same thing before. I sent an email to Jenny Max asking about that vacancy on the planning commission. And then the gentleman that was sitting right here in this seat, Ross Crock Kremer resigned and I was four or five months in planning and zoning and. He kept looking, I mean, what about you, would you ever be interested in that? Said, yeah, I think I would, I applied, got appointed and then ran for election. And, you know, the rest, so. And you know, the rest, so. We want to get as much involvement. And if there's feedback of how we can interpret any ideas or plans or, or take your, all of your collective input and ideas, so it makes us better. In the long run, so thank you.
Yeah, and and I would just encourage um. Anytime that there's something that affects us, um the people paying the bills, the taxpayers. Keep it open if at all possible, you know. It's hard for us to learn because there's so much to learn. Um. We need to be present as much as possible. I hope the new mayor will, will also help with this. Um I don't like the closed sessions, guys. You know, I don't like them at all because I want to learn. Um if it affects me. And my neighbors who are paying the taxes, I really believe we have a right. To be here and to listen. Because it affects us. So just, just my thoughts. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now opposed. We are now in closed session.
Five minute recess, please.
Yep, recess for. He he will let us know. When it's ready. Well, Jenny will.